Good evening and welcome to June 8th, 2017 Planning Board Meeting. Uh, this is a workshop, but we continue the subdivision for Dean Gibson, East Coast Industrial Properties, on West Side of Perkins Pond, map 410 lot 57, to this meeting last time. I remember right, there was mostly some minor issues, but there's a couple little eh, moderate, one moderate issue, two moderate issues. Not even moderate really. Figure it very much out. So we can go through the list? Well, I had the, oh, question note two which seems to be done, we had the acreage change which seems to be done, we have this rose, what? Note three said 10 acres of which should be or, that's changed. I see the note about new buildings on all four lots, west and west end.
This, this one's for this.
Um...
Thank you, thank you. No, 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 it's not that, it's this, this one is for this.
There's a flood zone on there.
Haven't seen that yet. Flood zones on there?
That notch there. See it there? You see it now?
Yep. And you have the wetland buffer labeled?
Yep. Alexander's.
Oh, that's correct. Is it what?
Alexander.
Where is it?
The name is. Well, I don't know what the big issue, I guess that...
You moved the 4K?
What's that?
You moved the 4K?
Oh. Take care of that guy. Uh, the floods, the buffer for the prime wetland. It seems as though I took the, uh, Conservation Commission's word for it when they looked on the website, but it turns out there's no buffer for Perkins Pond.
Actually checked it out and saw the same thing. Neither one of the prime zones in town have a wetland buffer.
Why is that?
I had no idea. He has the same map I have, but he doesn't have it.
Yeah, but I didn't have the, it didn't come in color.
When you say there's no buffer... Aren't we supposed to put in a prime? Aren't, doesn't the zoning ordinance say there should be a buffer?
DES has... Quite a few years ago, DES had the municipalities go and classify wetlands and try to determine if any were prime or not. Ware decided that the Perkins Pond and the marsh above Forest Lake were prime wetlands. DES, all the, in E and W T, whatever it is, 700 talks about prime wetlands and 100 put buffer, but the map shows no buffer for these two wetlands.
Can you explain to me what is a prime wetland versus a regular wetland?
It's higher functions and values for antigens and wildlife and sanitation and et cetera. I don't know the reason, I may take a guess though. Guess everybody remembers back a couple of years ago, I was trying to, we had a subcommittee to try to make the wetland buffer variable to the function and value of the wetland.
Yes.
Or this 425, Bruce is on it, I think Tom Carr and...
Steve Major?
Steve Major. When I first presented that to the Conservation Commission, before the subcommittee was made, with the Conservation Commission, and I remember Steve and Andy both said that where we had two prime wetlands, I was kinda shocked at the one down in 13, was it? But it's not. And they both come out and said that they wouldn't be prime anymore because of the uses arriving. I assume it's a road.
149 running beside it.
149 running beside it, right.
But the other side?
Hey, I'm not a wetland scientist. All I know is there's no buffer, where is that map?
The road run right down beside it kinda.
But the que, but the question is, if this is designated a prime wetland, and if our ord, ordinance says there has to be a water...
Well, there is a, no, our order says anything about prime.
Oh?
Our order says nothing about wetlands. So there is a, there is a 25 for the buffer.
That we require?
Put them up in addition because it's a problem.
So who requested the, the prime buffer put in?
Our Conservation Commission.
The Conservation Commission.
And I thought the big one was the one on 13 down by, off Segold Road. I mean, that was the one that...
Looks awesome, but it, it's plenty of a prime wetland. The only one that's there and there, neither one would have a buffer.
And that's because DES failed to...
I, I assume it's the, the value of the wetland, the wetland does not make the highest value for a water buffer. I'm assuming that.
In other words, we de, we requested that these be designated, they were reviewed by DES and said, sorry, you failed to meet the criteria, and therefore...
No, they are prime, they are prime wetland, but they don't, for some reason they don't have a buffer, I don't know why.
There's a lot of towns that don't, that have prime wetlands and there's only buffers around them, not all of them.
Yeah, I went through a...
And she pointed that out, yeah, Stephanie pointed that out.
And DES is the one who makes that determination?
I don't, yeah, probably.
Is this just a bureaucratic follow-up, or is somebody's affirmative decision that...
No, they, they've reviewed all the prime wetlands and some need buffers and some don't. It's that simple. Some need a buffer because they, they'd be higher of value, I suppose.
I assume it's higher value.
Are you gonna seat John?
I'm sorry, we have an empty chair, so I'm gonna make, put John a voting number.
I thought I heard you do that about Kim's here.
I thought I did too, but nobody else heard me.
I didn't hear it. I still wrote it, but...
I actually went to a couple of other towns and we're doing a job and saying we want to try to prime wetland right now. Of course, the one I'm working on is a big red buffer all over it, but there were some that didn't for some reason.
Yeah, some, yeah.
Don't know why, some in town did and some didn't.
And when there is a buffer, they actually go out and mark it?
No, they try to force it.
But there's no, the state doesn't go out and put...
No, markings of the 100 foot.
You don't have enough money for that?
No.
So the Conservation Commission was asking for the prime buffer to be put in here when one does not exist according to the maps that you have, correct?
I...
Well, I think they must have misread it or...
I'm not sure.
They were on the website.
They, they mentioned that Perkins Pond was a prime, a prime wetland, I don't know if they actually mentioned a buffer.
Okay.
To be honest, I don't know. Either way, the wetland, the prime wetland would extend to the edge of the wetland.
So they did mention 100 foot buffer, that's why I did it, anyway, whatever. I did it by mistake. And I didn't check it before I went out there. But I, I was, I was setting those, looking for those iron rods along that jagged line there, so I found a bunch of them while we were doing all of them. They were very bent over.
All on that wood room?
Yeah. They're probably in a way of people walking through there.
Art 197 on this map, it says flood zone. Who owns that jog out?
Fish and Jane.
Got it. In 77D?
That's a soil type.
But that's part of lot 57B?
Yep.
Is that buildable?
I haven't been out there actually. No, it's pretty ledgey. No one's going out there to build. They either have no reason to build.
The only thing for a minute is the... Yes. Okay, the only else we had on my list was the monuments along the stone wall and the frontage. And aren't giving a waiver request? For the monuments along these...
For every jagged corner you want to focus.
On behalf of GM Investment Properties or GM Investment Partners, LLC, I am requesting a waiver to setting a monument on every change of direction of the boundary of the four lots. The reason this interpretation was not, that government applied prior to the subdivision, I think a warning of this interpretation should be given prior to application of the rule. Now that said, it is unnecessary applying this much monumentation of boundary given a client, and that's what the project would be difficult.
Mainly applies to that. Was he applying for a waiver for the frontage forms too, Greg?
Requesting waiver on every change of direction of the boundary.
Well, yeah.
I would assume that means everywhere he does not show a monument to be set or a monument in front of it. So yes, I would say frontage.
What is this?
I mean, I can see along, along a...
And that's where a monument would have to be set.
You're gonna find a lot of curved lines, curved property lines, I mean, we're gonna try and eliminate every little... If, if we're gonna be, be required to do that, everybody's gonna start making curved boundary lines.
So, what, where you will set boundaries if this waiver is granted, where, is wherever it says MTBS?
Yep. And that's been the normal mode of setting corners. I mean, those ones over along Perkins Pond, those are appropriate to set there because there's no, there's nothing out there. Whereas over here, along the road, you've got a road, you're gonna have monumentation, you've got the right of way there. That stone wall over there is a stone wall. It makes sense to set, no, we, I don't think this, I think Craig and I discussed it, there's only one town that requires, and that's Bedford.
There's a couple down there.
There may be a couple. It's not normal mode of monumentation. And when estimating a job, it would be very difficult to guess how many corners you're gonna set, I mean, you can kinda guess it.
Just for the record, this is from section 8.6B, or 8.61B.
Page?
Hopefully page 33. This is all lot, it's part of the, all of, and it says reeled, I think it means rear lot corners and angle points, sideline showing monument either type.
Sorry, what was the, uh, supposed paragraph that we're looking at?
8.61B, page 33.
8.61B on mine's page 31, but okay.
Upstairs.
There's several towns down south that would say you have to set them, and that's orders to it. As a matter of fact, I don't, we're doing a job of effort where we actually have bounds that we've dug one hole and put two bounds in because there's an angle point.
Right that close together.
That close together.
I know, and it's confusing, it's confusing collateral landowners too, when they go out there and they think there's a corner, and you get another one 23 feet away, and they don't know which one is theirs and...
I see both sides of the argument. I would think if we were gonna rebuild Perkins Pond Road, it'd be nice to have those monuments in there so we know to wipe them out where it's proper. At the same time, I think it's a real backbreaking job to set them all, to say the least.
Would it make sense to require them to be set along Perkins Pond Road, but not along the stone wall? A jog at the, uh...
Yeah, the, the stone wall, the stone wall in my opinion is unnecessary, the wall is the monument.
Stone wall's a stone wall.
The stone wall is the monument. The dean may call it the stone wall, but that'd be, but... If I go out and survey and I find it, then I think the angle point's 51.42 feet rather than 51.39 feet, it's still a stone wall. I count 6, along Perkins Pond Road, 3, 4, 5, 6.
I'm gonna amend that frontage to be curves. I'm gonna create a curved line along the, along the road to eliminate...
How do you do that? How can you create a curve?
I created, I created that by just locating segments on the road. And I could've easily, and I can, create a curve off...
But, but what's, what's the center point of the radius? I mean, how do you do a curve where you just say it's parallel to the road? I don't know that the road is curved.
It's curved.
Oh, it's curved.
It's curved, look at it. But, but it's curved, I mean, it's, and I, what I, but I...
What are you doing with computers, you draw a line along the road?
But, we took, we take, we take, we take, we locate points on the road, and then I offset them. And it created those angle points.
Is your line...
Now, I could've created a curved line on that center line, because there is a reasonable, a reasonable curve there.
There's no, there's no legal description for the road.
I can create a curve on that road that exists.
How do, how do you know where to put your line here? Do you make it parallel to...
Yeah, I'm explaining it, we locate the center of the road, and so we have a point here and a point here. Now, I have an option.
Even though...
Okay, I have an option, I have three points, I locate the road here, here, and here. I have an option of using the points or creating a curve on those three points.
You, and you make the assumption that the road is in the center of the right-of-way?
Correct.
But in many cases...
In this case, I do.
In this case, you'd probably use the two, the two points, I would've used the two points.
What two points?
The corner of the stone wall, how far is it off the center of the wall? And the iron pipe mound, how far is it off the center of the road?
You can see that my line's not parallel with the center, with the edge of the road, so I probably need to fix that anyway. Anyway, you're gonna find, see a lot of curved lines.
What you're saying is that we really don't know where the right-of-way is.
Well, you do, it's the middle of the road.
We use the center line of the road because there's no other, there's no other evidence, there's no other evidence of the center.
Only other evidence is we have a stone wall, but there's no stone wall.
But, but when we create a road...
This road was created so long ago that there was no...
I see, so you're assuming if this is a three-rod road or two-rod road, that the road was in the center of that two-rod distance.
Correct.
I see.
Except for there's a stone wall beside it.
But if in fact you had bounds such as two stone walls, and this road was nearer to one stone wall than the other, you would take the stone wall as the bound, got it? Thank you.
Because there's no evidence, there's no evidence here.
So he's, so, so he's gonna have his line parallel to this road?
Which is fine, yeah, that would get rid of all these angle points.
So I'm gonna create a new frontage, that's all. You okay with that, Greg?
As long as you still have 250 feet of frontage.
About 250 or 4 might be tall.
Yeah, that's what I was just looking, that's what I was looking at.
Oh, that's 57, that's pretty straight anyway, that's not gonna change much.
Yeah, I would, I would think your curve was gonna be between, what, 57 and 1, 57 and 2?
If I have to move it over here, it'll get, I got, I got another foot on the next lot. I'm just telling you what I'm gonna do, that's all, when you see the plan.
You're gonna save, what, three or four monuments?
Six.
Six. No, when he puts the curve in, I mean.
Whatever, I can s, I can do that in 10 minutes in the office.
Yeah.
You need to, you need to amend your, your rating now.
Let me rephrase that, it's actually 8.61A and B, because 1A talks about the frontage.
It's the front corner, I see.
Well, changes in direction of the right-of-way.
Let me correct this with my red pen.
Shall be monumented with stone or concrete bounds, there shall be no more than 70 feet of concrete bounds along the right-of-way. Says the same thing. I was gonna say something different actually.
Just the monumenting the right-of-way of the lot, that's right.
Correct. The front block corners will change the direction of the right-of-way.
I always thought that was typical, that's what it says. Doesn't say where, whether it's for new roads or specifically for new roads. Old roads. Anyway, gonna see new frontage. But then now I think we're good.
How much does it cost to set a bound? Roughly?
Lock on, $100.
So you'd have to spend $600 basically to put the bounds in?
Case time, you never know what you're gonna run into.
Yeah.
Where are you buying your bounds?
Buying from the bowl out.
Okay. It's 26 bucks right there, I think.
What, we did, yeah?
I'm not saying it from the phone.
I don't, I don't want Neil to gasp.
So we have a waiver request for section 861A and B.
For the entire, or is he just doing it for the stone wall?
For monuments not shown on the plan, how would we save that one?
Well, that includes the stone wall and the six along the road.
Yes. I don't personally have a problem granting one and one together, I'm not sure about granting, I don't know if I have a, that's...
I think you can eliminate all the points on the road when creating a curve, like you said. I'd rather, I'd rather do that, not have the points on the road, give the waiver for the stone wall monuments. With the stone wall, anybody moves, that's a lot line.
I'm okay with that.
Now, the monuments to be set indicated here would still remain?
Yes.
Just in between?
Right. I'm gonna graphically fill that, essentially, one of these goes on a panel front by occurring with this on there.
Can we prove this conditionally so he doesn't have to come back?
Am I counting right that there's eight monuments to be set?
Around the property?
Yes.
I see eight monuments.
I'm looking at eight.
I do.
Which one?
For section 861A and B.
For the stone wall points?
As a result of that, is he gonna change the line along the road, or keep the line and not put the bounds in?
My guess is he'd keep the line but not the bounds.
I'll sign it, so we can caution if we have to.
If we grant the waiver, I would, personally, I wouldn't take the time to recoup the way to curve one.
Does he still have to show all that little tick marks in here though?
Mm-hmm.
Which marks?
It would stay, it would stay the way it is. I'm asking for a waiver to keep everything the way it is, right? If I don't get it, then I'm gonna change this for a minute. I mean, it does make sense, we've always done it this way, but it's all the same.
There's no real difference in the world if the, uh, Perkins Pond Wesley right-of-way is segments 100 foot long or 60 or 80 or 72 instead of 26, or if it's one long curve through the frontage. The world is the same, roads aren't ever changing. I don't see a big difference from there either.
Call a vote?
We can see there's any more discussion, Bruce has a sitting, he's kinda surprised, but, okay. All in favor?
It's because he's the one who can.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained?
I'm not gonna abstain. I hate when people do that.
I was wondering what you're doing, you weren't doing anything there. So motion passed?
I'm just not a fan of having all the tick marks out there, and just because it's easier on straight lines as opposed to quick and curves.
Well, had I known that you wanted curves before this, again, in my, in my waiver request, I asked, I said, it's a heck of a time to spring that on somebody in the middle of an application. Now, if that's gonna be the policy from now on, that's fine.
You're saying that even though subdivision regulations say one thing, we've never done that?
Never. He, Bruce interpreted it last week for the first time ever. Well, whatever, I'm just saying, in public is when he specified that regulation, to be interpreted the way he is interpreting it.
I would prefer to help, in the spirit of cooperation here, that we reword that waiver for the stone wall lines and changes in the boundary, you know, the direction of the stone wall and have them fix the plan.
Which way are you voting?
He doesn't have to come back for another meeting.
We got a motion with 4, 4, 8 guesses and nothing else said. Sorry, we do.
I know. I never voted, did I, Greg?
Motion passes 401. Motion passes...
Paul, you don't even vote yet, you're gonna vote yet?
No, I, I'm gonna vote with Bruce.
Okay, motion passes 202.
Uh, 320.
No, 320. I thought you were saying...
No, no, we're both voting.
I didn't hear a vote, so I thought that was a...
I'm with him.
Motion still pass, 320.
Was it Tom that...
Tom made the...
I second. First and you second?
Yes.
So we're all approved, oh, yeah, we're not there yet.
No question.
No, 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 yeah.
You got the waiver.
Yeah, sorry.
So was that the waiver?
That was the waiver.
That was the waiver.
I see even the 4K area had a problem with up there, did you see the pile of rock that looked like was up there?
Yeah. I pull this forward, it looks a lot better down there, maybe, who knows? Who knows where somebody wants to build?
Ten acres of, they'll find a place for subjects.
And you got a note on here about the building in the back. Make motion to approve the subdivision.
Is there anything else, Craig?
With the condition, it says the eight monuments?
Would the, would the condition for eight monuments be set?
That's why I was counting, yes.
Yeah.
But even if you didn't say that, you have to.
Right.
Now, you gotta say, usually, Craig usually says it.
He's, he's made a commitment here when he says monuments to be set.
Don't say when he's gonna settle.
No, no, but they gotta be set. He's not gonna sign them. I don't know what to say. It's gotta be a condition.
Anybody second that?
I will.
Thank you. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Congratulations.
That wasn't supposed to be where, that wasn't supposed to proven, hit.
Neil, years, years ago, these plans would get approved and say monuments to be set. Me, me the survey that goes to client says I need, I'm not gonna pay, okay?
I'm not gonna settle.
I'm not gonna settle. Can I get your board?
Can I repeat that last thing to your effect?
What?
The motion that was just made. I just said Mr. Fillmore made a motion to approve the subdivision with the condition of the eight monuments to be set.
Yes, that's it.
Is this the latest?
And then the town's probably smart as a cat, they're gonna want to pull the work.
And then Chip started looking at him and goes to give CEOs our houses, and there's no monuments, so the CEO's on the corner, stuck having things.
Just Chip wouldn't give them a CEO until they were set. Does that count? I mean, that's a pretty cheap part of the...
On a subdivision, it is pretty cheap for the part of the developer, but some other regions like that where there's no improvements or whatever built on it, it's the only...
Here's your homework for next...
I know you're not gonna be here, but we'd like to stay and surprise of what's going on.
You can be here next meeting, the twenty-second? Yes.
There's a possibility, the answer is yes, but there's a legislative session that day, and it could run very late, so there is a possibility of...
Don't, don't think I'm gonna be here.
I'm gonna have to abstain from that first continuation. Is that gonna be a problem?
That's why I was asking you if you're gonna be here.
I expect to be here, but I can't promise. I just don't know how long the session goes.
How big was it?
It's the latter, exactly. I'll give, I'll give, of course, everyone will be extended, but gotta get...
Can we have that conversation?
Wanted to hear about Neil first. So we have minutes from two, twenty, May twenty-fifth, and I got some stuff for the vesting if you wanna move on. What should we do first?
And we never went over the twenty-seven.
I thought we did.
No.
Well, I'm still missing one set of minutes prior to passing.
It's the ones that John put.
I bet you guys approved those, all right?
Didn't I send those to you?
These ones.
I thought I sent them to you.
They approved the April twenty-ninth. That was a.
Sightwalk.
Sightwalk.
Yeah, I, I think I sent the other ones, too, the ones that he did.
You sent them and I have them, but we never reviewed them. Mine says draft.
Yeah, but I thought, I thought that was approved. John never updated that.
No.
You know, the way you update it when you go from draft to final, John never did that.
I didn't know. I was supposed to update anything. I never got. I wasn't here when it was approved, so...
I don't think it was ever approved.
It was not.
Okay.
I've got a little...
Was that the eleventh?
No, the eleventh that got approved.
April twenty-seventh.
Last meeting, we decided that we were gonna do it at this meeting, 'cause I wrote bring to June meeting.
It'll go faster that way.
What?
Neither of these guys have it. Do you have corrections for the twenty-seventh?
Oh, boy. There we go.
I'll need a copy of whatever you have to change.
Well, she's gonna change it.
Oh, perfect. Good, I don't want to do that.
Let's do it next time after I get my notes more organized then. Yes.
So, the, the minutes of the twenty-ninth are not on the website. Just as an FYI, if that can be corrected.
I will speak to the person that I sent them to.
Thank you.
And I can probably give you the same answer that she's going to give me.
Dear headlights?
Yes.
Which twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth?
April twenty-ninth, the sidewalk.
Yeah, there should be minutes on the website, but there aren't.
I guess they can send them along.
Yeah, it's a failure on this side, apparently.
One of his employees.
Anyway, let's do May twenty-fifth minutes.
Did we do it the eleventh?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I had a couple things on page one. Page two. Midway down, I'm gonna speak for, paragraph starts, Mr. Fillmore went for a sidewalk. And he said there is a five-foot rise of ledge. He's going to ask that we tested for topo?
I didn't know what topo was.
Topographic.
But it was actually a test pit for the fork area because it's so close to the ledge. It wasn't tested for topo, it was test pit.
Test pit?
Right.
So he's going to ask it to be...
Ask for a test pit for the topo?
No.
You didn't take surveying in high school?
Because it was so close to ledge, I suggested maybe it needed to have a test pit there to prove that that area was viable.
Okay.
He's going to ask for a test pit in the four K area. How's that?
He's going to ask for a test pit?
Yes.
That's where you dig a hole and watch for the water to seep in.
In the four K area.
Should he specify of which lot?
Fifty-seven.
Right here.
Yes, this is all on that.
There was a four lot fifty-seven.
Then Mr. Fillmore wants a note to be made on, made on the... Instead of opposite, I would say western side of the wetland. There's no building.
Western side.
Of the wetland. Next sentence, no west, no residences west of the wetland will be able to, I was gonna add, to be built instead of to building.
May be built, or can be built.
Able to be built.
Able to be built?
No residents west of the wetland will be able to be built without prior approval from the planning board.
But in arts, um... She, he didn't say residences, he said buildings.
We did.
He said buildings, which includes barns and houses.
We, we were saying residences.
Yeah, I brought that up.
He put no building, so...
Because I asked the question whether it was shit or a barn.
Right.
He chose to put no building in here, so that's better than what I asked for, so.
I mean, the first sentence said, Mr. Fillmore wants a note to be made that on the western side of the wetland, that no building will be permitted without a permit, and then no residents west of the wetlands will be able to be built without approval from the planning board, not Canada.
Yeah, I guess you can, you can agree to that second sentence, can't you?
I see it's Canada.
Yeah, we don't need more seconds.
So which one do I get rid of?
Second one.
The no residents?
Yes.
And is that topo word again on the last sentence?
That's good.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
You've done good.
I don't know how many times I've listened to it, I'm like, I, I'm just gonna write it.
Topo is short for topography, but, yes.
Got it.
It's a lot easier to spell.
Yeah, a lot easier to say, too. On page two. Number five. Monuments along the...
Front line.
Yeah.
Keeping you on your toes.
How about we just say monuments along the stone wall?
There you go.
Number eight. Move, move, add, start out saying move, the four K on lot forty-seven. Take out the word without.
Move the four K on lot forty-seven.
Period. Careful, and no residents shall be constructed west of the wetlands without prior planning or approval.
No residents shall...
Shall be constructed west of the wetlands. I'm onto the next one. Do you have anything else to add?
About halfway down the paragraph, that's where Kerry Weatherby.
Yep.
I think where it says quiet, you meant quiet.
Yes.
And then, is it electricity a hundred and ten watts, is that what you had?
Volts.
That's what I thought, change it to volts. Those are the two that I had.
Can we change the word in the first sentence? Mr. Francisco and Mr. Fillmore state they have professional doings. Can we change that to relationship?
Thank you.
With Mr. Heather, with Mr. Weatherby? Sounds a little bit of doings. I knew what you meant. And down near the end, Mr. Kirk made a motion instead of to move, to continue to June twenty-second.
Are you still on the second?
Yep. Turning it, that last sentence in, from number one-three. Mr. Kirk made a motion to continue to June twenty-second. And Mr. Van seconded.
Made a motion, get rid of to move.
Yes, get rid, get rid of to move, made a motion to continue, and Mr. Van, what's his name, seconded, five, zero, zero. Page three. Third paragraph, Mr. Sisneyano said they are adjusting lots, shape it to make it lot lines. And Mr. Fillmore made a motion, and Mr. Kirk seconded to approve the application with the changes.
Say it again?
Last sentence, Mr. Fillmore made a motion, and Mr. Kirk seconded to approve the application.
That's before number five, right, that was the language of?
Yep.
Will, will the minutes as of now?
Seconded.
Distraction. All in favor?
Aye.
Vesting. We had a long conversation a month ago.
Is what we're doing now...
The public hearing?
Part of the requirement that Mr. Drescher imposed on us?
Yes. Still trying to change, revise subdivision regulations.
Have we had a public hearing on this, or not?
No. I'd like to get that for a little more.
No, that's fine.
Where we wanna be first. It's the last time we talked about this. Vesting.
Subdivision regulation, remember?
Mr. Drescher gave us this little thing that Tom has in his hand, I believe. It was kind of a suggestion for RSA six seventy-four thirty-nine, and we talked about it for a while. Active and substantial development of the building happens in the first two years. Substantial completion of improvements is within the five-year period after approval.
Is this a legal definition, or is this his interpretation?
That part's a legal definition.
Okay, including the timelines?
Yes. Like, I don't know, I know Tom went here, I don't know if you were here, but what happens is you get, like, tonight, we did a conditional approval. When the conditions are met, I sign the Mylar with today's date. So it could be eleven months, eleven and a half months from today that I signed the Mylar. So he has two years from today to do active substantial development of the building.
So the clock doesn't restart when you sign it?
No, it's started now.
Okay.
At the meeting starts. So, and we're talking about vesting from zoning changes. So suddenly we went to twenty-acre zoning, as a forensics. And it's all related to improvements. Road building typically is that sometimes there's off-site improvements. I was mistaken last time. If he meets, if somebody meets the active and substantial development or building criteria, substantial, substantial improvement, doesn't mean a thing. He's vested.
But he has to meet it in a certain amount of time?
No, if he, if he does the active substantial in two years of, of the approval.
Within two years of the approval?
Right, he's vested.
So at two years and a month, he's no longer vested?
If he doesn't make substantial.
If he doesn't do the active substantial development, we, we have to define it.
Okay.
If he does the active substantial within one year and three hundred and fifty-five days, he's vested forever.
So we do not have a definition as a town of where, then?
Correct.
And that's what we're trying to do?
Correct. Right now, the court is deciding what that means.
Why have we never had a definition in the past?
We have a definition in zoning, which is the incorrect place to put it, and it means nothing.
Okay, what's, so the definition in zoning is what? And can't we just, if it's an acceptable definition, why can't we just move it to?
Yeah, yeah, that, that's a part of it, yeah.
Any issues if I turn off the air conditioner?
No, I don't mind.
Thank you.
Okay.
I wish I could transfer my car, the air conditioner, just laughing.
I had to turn on the heat yesterday, but I'm gonna have to have the AC on tomorrow. This is ridiculous.
Oh, boy, where, where is it? Had to ask me where it was, didn't it? Somewhere around page eleven, three point twelve point one.
What's the section?
Three point twelve point one.
On page eleven, it looks like, at least online.
Mine is page eleven, yes.
We're talking about zoning or plan, or subdivision?
It's in zoning. It needs to be in subdivision.
I thought we already did it there. We would have to put it now and...
We do. He, he asked where it was in zoning.
Oh, okay.
If we just copy and paste into subdivision. That was the question.
Isn't that what we should do?
Well, yes, if we all agree that that's the definition we want, right?
That's the first question, yes. Well, first, one is, one is it legal and two, no, is what we want.
I thought the town had to...
They don't approve, approve subdivision.
They have to, it has to know a committee to take, strike this out of the zone.
Right, has to know a committee to get it out of the zone. We've left it in, I've left it, I haven't brought it up the last two years, just because we had to have it someplace.
Gotcha.
Better to have it in the wrong place than no place. It's the way, it's the way I kinda looked at it.
But to put it into subdivision, do we need a town vote, or is that just, just public hearings?
Public hearings, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
The one thing it doesn't do is, it, well, A, it has the wrong RSA. It's not thirty, it's thirty-nine.
That's a subtle correction.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine?
Yeah, it should be six seventy-four thirty-nine. It doesn't define substantial completion of the improvements.
And six seventy-four thirty-nine doesn't define the substantial completion either, correct? I just don't think we ought to reinvent the wheel if it's already defined in the RSAs.
No, the, the RSA says redo it.
Okay.
Six seventy-four thirty-nine, Roman numeral three, the planning board may, as part of its subdivision site plan regulations, whereas a condition of subdivision plat, or site plan approval, justify the thresholds of work that shall constitute the following terms which do regard to scope and details of particular projects, substantial completion of the improvements, da-da-da-da-da, active substantial development or building. Failure of the planning board to specify regulations, whereas a condition of subdivision plat or site plan approval, what shall constitute active substantial work of building, shall entitle subdivision plat or site plan approved by the planning board to the five-year exemption described in paragraph one. The planning board may, for good cause, extend the twenty-four-month period set forth in the, it's, it's complicated there, but.
So what's paragraph one say then, if we don't define something?
Active and substantial development or building has begun on the site by the owner or the owner's successor in interest, in accordance with the approved subdivision plan, within twenty-four months after the date of approval, or in accordance with the terms of approval. And if a bond or other security to cover the cost of roads, drains, or sewers is required in connection with such approval, such bond or other security is posted with the city town accounting, which they are located, unincorporated towns of development range in full compliance with the public health regulations and ordinances testified in this section at the time of approval, and according to subdivision plat or site plan conforms to the subdivision regulations, site plan review, or site plan review regulations, and zoning ordinances then, in effect, at their location of such subdivision plat or site plan. But it still doesn't define.
Doesn't, doesn't define what it is.
Active and substantial development.
The courts have kind of decided over the years what that is.
Okay.
What level of road completion needs to be done?
So if we don't, if we don't come up with anything, then we have to go with what the RSA is, yeah, the RSA is just, it's vague.
In the courts.
And, and and who knows what the courts will say?
Right. So Mr. Drescher threw this out, and we talked about it for a while. Quite a while. I don't really want to speak for Chuck and Neil, but it seemed that they were wanting the road paved in both cases.
Paved with the, the final wear course?
Binder course.
Substantial completion is essentially the base post is down, base code of pavement is down. But active and substantial doesn't necessarily mean any pavement is now. They got five years to get to the base post being down.
Okay.
But it's the twenty-four-month threshold that is more, I think, the problem definition.
I looked at a bunch of towns. Most of them are very confusing and I didn't really understand them, to be honest with you. I grabbed Bedford's, Dairy, and Francis Town just. They're saying twelve months in France Town, but anyway, it says active substantial development of building has begun on the site by the owner or successor in interest in accordance with approved plat within twelve months after the date of approval, or in accordance with the terms of the approval, and if a bond or other security to cover the cost of roads, drains, or sewers is required in connection with this approval.
That's probably verbatim out of the RSA, except for twelve instead of twenty-four.
Right.
Which I'm not sure of the thing.
Dairy, without reading the whole stuff in the front, says, um, active substantial development, the absence of specific finding of the board coming construction of one or more subdivision roads on subdivision through binder course of bought by two minutes pavement sufficient to cause eligibility for certificates of occupancy.
And that was for what?
Active, active and substantial.
So they want to binder course down for active and substantial?
For one or more subdivision roads. Yes.
So what was the definition of substantial completion?
Well, it's, now, hang on, I'm still talking about active substantial.
Because active and substantial isn't.
Bedford says in the absence of a specific finding by the planning board, active substantial shall be deemed to have occurred when at least twenty percent of the length of the approved onsite road system, or six hundred linear feet, whichever is greater, as shown in the entire subdivision plan, has been constructed to finish grade, all roads controlled, et cetera.
So it's saying twenty percent of the road?
And bonded, and the rest of it's bonded.
Right, and the rest of it's bonded.
So we got, and there was other, there was stuff in, everywhere in between, to be honest with you, I looked at Merrimack, Auburn, Lennon Dairy, Concord, Hopkinton.
I think it's good to have a certain percentage identified because there could be so many different size subdivisions.
Right.
That if you look at the percentage, you could have that variable, whether it's a small or larger subdivision.
Well, we were talking last week without naming any particular subdivision. Where it's like five phases, one phase is built, but all, the whole thing is vested because he did it in one year. But he hasn't done nothing since. Is that fair to have, is that what the board thinks is, is fair for vesting, to have whatever the percentage is, call it twenty percent, but it's the first phase of the plan. Done, then it's not done. Two binder cores.
Well, it could likely be twenty percent.
It could be twenty percent, I don't know, but is it not?
The question is, does he have the bond in place the whole time?
I doubt it. I'm sure he hasn't, but that's, our, we don't say we have to right now.
You are correct.
And we'd go either, we can either go a twenty percent thing or say phase one has to be done, whichever.
I mean, I kind of like the twenty percent thing with the, with the.
I kind of do too.
With the bond in place, with the rest of it.
I think the bond's important.
Which is the bond is, I mean, that's, was spelled out here and.
So you're not gonna make a decision tonight, are you?
I doubt it.
See ya.
See ya.
I have no input, I am not a member of the board, I'm not a member.
Unless we do something illegal and you won't know about it.
He doesn't want to know.
But I know there was a lot of conversation last time about having the whole thing built to get vesting.
Now, just for my ignorance, vesting is what?
Vesting means that you, once you've achieved that status.
Once you, once you've completed, once you've written.
Once you, once you're vested, you're exempt from all zoning and subdivision changes, it do not affect, do not affect the public health and safety.
So we can't go back and say, you know, something, we're, we're changing from two point five to five acre?
Which we did, since that point, started.
Right.
Okay, so once he got vested, whatever changes we make.
Didn't matter.
He's exempt, he's grandfathered from it, gotcha, okay.
But for how long?
Forever.
No, is, isn't there a time limit on that, like five or six years?
No, you're, you're exempt for five years anyway.
Yeah, automatically exempt for five years.
You're exempt for five years now.
But if you don't do anything with, if you don't meet substantial completion within that five years.
You lose it.
You, you now are subject to current day zoning regs.
Right.
Okay.
Which happened in a couple other subdivisions as well.
So what's the linkage between active and substantial and substantial completion?
Well, active substantial is, is active, obviously you're still working, you're working on it that day, or you have equipment there, it's being worked on.
Active, active substantial, you're doing, you're doing quite, you're doing work in the first two years.
Which makes, which gives you a five-year protection?
No, gives you forever.
So as long as they're still working on it, it's protected?
Nope, doesn't say that.
So if they're still working on it, on year three, what, where, where are they at then?
You're exempt for five years, period, doesn't matter if you're working or not.
Okay.
If, if by year two they have met our definition of active and substantial, they're vested forever.
Okay.
If they meet it year three, it doesn't matter.
And, but they get exempt for that five years?
Yep.
No, you're always exempt.
No, you're not always exempt, you're only exempt from the date if the plan is recorded within the one year.
Well, yeah.
From approval date.
Right.
That's what, that's where the five year starts now. If, say, you approve a subdivision, conditions have to meet, and they don't meet the conditions within the one year, and the plan, the Mylar doesn't re, doesn't get recorded, then that five-year timeframe doesn't stop. They have to have the plan recorded within that year, or get a
Continuance.
Continuance.
A year from the date they apply.
No, they, we approve, we condition approve.
So it takes them six months to get approval. It's now September, they started in March, it's now September.
But it takes them six months to get their financing in order, bonding, all that kind of thing, I mean, it could take a year, up to a year to get that stuff.
It could take a year.
Yeah.
So when does the clock start then, in that scenario?
They get twelve, they get twelve months from the night we say, okay, you're conditionally approved.
Okay.
To fulfill those conditions, so that the, to get the Mylar recorded.
Okay.
That starts their five-year exemption window.
And when does that five-year exemption window begin, September?
When the Mylar's recorded, as far as, no? Same, same night that's approved, okay. So it's really a four year.
So they're, so they're losing their first six months then?
If they, if they, if there are conditions to fulfill.
Say, say these guys, they had a road.
Yep.
They just left, had a, whatever, had a road to build. They got twelve months to meet the conditions so I can sign the Mylar.
From tonight.
From tonight. And I sign it June eighth, two thousand seventeen. Remember, just signed something the other day, I believe it was September or something, seven sixteen, but anyway. I sign it today, they got a year to fulfill the conditions, I date, I sign it, gets recorded, they got five years from today. They're, they're vested from zoning changes.
If they fill, fulfill the conditions within a year.
If, if they don't do anything, you're still vested for five years.
They have a five-year protection plan, basically, okay.
But if within two years, they do that twenty percent, then they're.
Then they're. Two years from today.
Then they're good forever.
Two years from today, based on this example.
Well, if we use it.
That was just a, that was just a.
Or if they have five years to get the road, the base code.
To what we call substantial completion, whatever that is. They got, they got three, three things going on at one time with, with the clock.
Yep.
They got twelve months to meet the conditions.
The conditions that we set tonight.
And if they don't meet those conditions.
They have to come back.
It expires after a year.
And they have nothing, and they're subject, they're not vested, no grandfathering.
No, nothing.
Any, any changes affect them.
Right, they have to reapply.
What about any bonds?
Well, if they didn't meet all the conditions, it doesn't matter.
Right, would you be willing to pull those together and bring in a draft of what you think would be appropriate wording? And then if you work from a draft like that, it's easier than trying to pluck a little from here.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to, in my mind, I'm trying.
Try me?
That's, that's Drescher's draft, yeah.
In my mind, I'm just trying, I'm trying to picture the timeline, so, so, starting today, we've, we've now given them, given somebody an approval.
Yes.
So, then at that point, based on the example, active and substantial completion, arbitrary number twenty percent. They have to hit that within two years.
Yes.
And then they are now protected against any future zoning changes.
Yes.
For good.
Yes.
Now, that twenty percent is for the overall project, not just the first phase.
Whatever the conditions are.
Whatever, whatever.
We're just using twenty percent or something.
Yeah.
Active substantial, yes.
But a road is not substantial unless we define it as that. It's whatever we set as, okay.
We have to set those thresholds.
Okay, so they have twenty-four months from today?
Yes.
But Drescher is recommending this as the wording we use in our subdivision?
Well, this is, the framework, there's no wording in here on what active and substantial is or substantial completion. So he still has, this, he offered a definition to those.
No, he has stuff in here. I don't think I agree with what he wrote down either, but.
So we really, under this plan, we have a choice. For a particular project, we could, under A one, determine what the improvements are.
Right.
If we don't do that, then automatically section two comes in.
Right.
In the absence of an express condition imposed by the planning board, the term means.
Yes.
Subdivision roads. Completion of one or more roads. That's not a half of the road, that's the full length of the road. If there are three roads.
Yes, we have.
He, he has to do one.
Right.
But if the first road is only two hundred feet long, is, is a is a feeder into two.
Yeah.
No, 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 it's, it's not a feeder into two roads, that's the whole road. The two hundred feet in.
No, that's not the way I read it.
Well, let's, we need to make, we need to make sure that we're in agreement on what that does mean.
Because the way I, the way I interpreted what you just said, if there's three roads, if you do one, then if you have a feeder road and then it tees from there, that feeder road is one road, and then.
I assume that the feeder and the two parts of the tee are all three together, a single road.
Not if they have different names.
No, that's why, that's why.
I'm saying it's, I don't care what he calls it.
Well, how could you have, how could you have more than one road then?
Because he's got one road coming in from one end of the subdivision, another road coming in from the, the other end, and a third road coming in from the middle, because of the nature of the land.
Okay.
He has to have three separate roads.
I think you.
Three separate entrances, Jimmy.
Three separate entrances, and each entrance has a road, and none of the roads interconnect.
I think we have A, B, and C, you have three different roads, even if it's just one entrance.
Yeah.
Either, either way, I don't like the word.
We can decide that. But if he does that within two years, if he meets the definition of is that.
Active and substantial.
Active and substantial development. So he does that within two years, then what?
He's good forever.
Even if he never finishes it?
Even if he never finishes it.
But it has to be bonded.
But it has to be bonded, right, well.
For that whole time.
For that whole time?
Forever.
As soon as the bond expires, so is his approval.
And if his approval expires, what happens?
Back to.
He's not grandfathered.
Back to all the new zoning.
Okay. So why do we need a definition of substantial completion?
Because that's, that's what he has to have done.
If somebody does nothing in two years. If somebody does nothing in two years, in year three, they break ground, how, how much do they have to have done?
So he does nothing in two years.
Then the substantial completion is.
Because active, he didn't actively and substantially develop, he didn't complete the road.
This is for the other three years, they get to the five years beyond the two.
So he's still, even though he didn't do anything, he's not permanently grandfathered, but he still has a possibility of five, he still is grandfathered for five years.
He's temporarily vested for the five years, yeah.
And if after the second year, he does substantial completion within the five years, then he would be grandfathered.
Right, forever.
So if he finishes in the first two years, he's protected for good. If he doesn't finish in the two years, he has three years to finish it.
Isn't finishing, the first two years is getting to a certain level of completion.
Right, whatever we determine, yep.
Right.
So if he, if he meets that point in two years, he's, he's covered for good.
Right.
If he fails to meet that point within twenty-four months, he now has thirty-six months.
A second chance.
He has a second chance to secure his grandfather status.
Making his vesting status.
Right, but to do that, it's a higher level of completion.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
He had to do a little bit in the first two years, but if he blows that.
You have to do a lot more.
He has to do a lot more in the next three.
Makes a lot of sense now, okay.
I'm just.
Yep.
I'm not asserting this, I'm stating it in a way that I'm looking for confirmation.
It is, makes sense that way, yep.
What really strikes me as strange, and this has been confusing probably, if you have a subdivision of a hundred lots, and he builds the road for fifty in two years.
And so we say that's active and substantial.
He builds the road for fifty in four and a half years. And we say that's not substantial completion. So he loses his vesting, doesn't bond it, doesn't do anything. Guy, whatever. Dies, whatever happens, happens. So you got this hundred-lot subdivision, fifty lots with the road all built, ready to go, and you got fifty more lots, and you got open space deep to the town all around it. You're not revoking the approval of the subdivision, you're making the lots non-buildable, but the lots still exist. You're not revoking the approval of the subdivision, you're making the lots non-buildable, but the lots still exist.
No, the lots are buildable, unless
Not, not the future ones. The entire subdivision is not vested.
Unless we change zoning regs. They haven't vested, but they are still buildable lots. Why not?
If they lose their vesting, they're not buildable lots.
Why?
If zoning changed.
If don't, if there are no zoning changes, like in twenty years from now.
There's no zoning.
Yeah, if there's no zoning changes. If there's no zoning changes, they're still buildable.
Yes.
If it turns out that there are zoning changes, then effectively, he's got to come back and
Redo it.
Put in half as many lots, the fifty lots become twenty-five.
Yeah. And, and
Or, the fifty lots become a hundred.
If the development is big enough, and the guy says, there's no chance in hell I'm going to get this thing substantially complete in five years, then he, he's got to come in
He's got to come back to us.
He's got, it's got, it, it's got, if he's got to work out a phasing plan or something like that, I mean, it doesn't happen around here, but you get down, that thing in Lunardary, they just started off the other day.
Woodmont.
Woodmont. That's a twenty-five-year project, that's not a five-year project. So they're going to be looking for approvals every year for the next twenty years.
Why?
Because it's huge. It's all another town almost.
But, how many acres is it? I've heard six hundred, but I don't know if that's right. I don't think so, I think it's too small. Six hundred acres isn't, not that big.
No, when you start putting in shopping centers and apartment buildings.
They're talking hotels.
Exit four A off the interstate.
Yeah. So if they want to be grandfathered against, I, as I assume they do, future zoning changes, within two years, they better well
No, they're going to have to work out a particular plan.
Well, of course, the planning board may have said, you, you do this, this, and this, and you're going to be, you're going to be
They're going to be specifying substantial and
Yeah, they could, they could redefine it.
Every seven, every time they go to
Yeah.
They can come up with their, a specific definition for specific development.
But the problem is that if they get active and substantial completion on segment one, and the zoning law changes, doesn't sections two, three, or segments two, three, four, five, and six, aren't they subject to the changes?
It may be, it all depends what they worked out with twenty-four ahead of time.
I assume that's all worked out. It's got to be.
I certainly, certainly wouldn't want to invest in that, unless it were all worked out.
I know, I know, we did, we did a large subdivision in Bedford, I don't remember how many lots it was, ninety-something. And I had to do a comprehensive plan. And what the comprehensive plan did was, it approved the whole thing. Approves is the wrong word. I'm going to use it anyway. But then you had to go back for final engineering, engineering approval for each phase. So for, every year for ten years, we went back again and got another phase approved.
What happens if you didn't? That went belly up.
I don't know. Never, never went there. But every year we had to go back and get another phase approved, so.
So I guess the first thing we need to do is we need to, we need to define what is going to be active and substantial, the first
What percentage, what percentage back?
Do we want to do a percentage?
I think percentage is a good way to do it, because then, you're not telling the guy, if he's got a five, let's say he's got a five-phase development, and the first phase is, a road's twenty feet longer than the other phases.
Yeah.
So when he gets that one done, that's twenty percent.
Okay.
So he either do that, and be, if we pick twenty percent as a number, he could either do that, or he could go through and rough out the whole thing, get up to a certain level of gravel, and still be at twenty percent, but not have any pavement in that.
Okay, so, we'll say, we'll say that it takes, from, excuse me, today is an example, you got approved today. Has to go get financing, how long is that going to take, on average?
Uh, what, pardon me?
Uh, applicant gets approved today.
Yep.
You got six, six to eight months to get financing, roughly? Is that average?
How, how big is the site, how big is the subdivision? More than fourteen lots?
We'll, we'll say twenty lot, just, just for argument.
You need AG approval, that's going to take four months.
Okay.
You need what approval?
AG approval.
So we're protecting the reason.
Right.
Okay.
That's going to take at least four months.
What's the size of a lot down there by the south fires, software fire station?
Fifteen.
Okay, we'll say fifteen then, for, for a lot size.
You need AG approval.
Okay.
To get your financing.
And that's four months. But, but the, you can go for your financing and the AG approval at the same time.
You can do it simultaneously, so it's, it's going to be at least four months.
So you got four months that nothing can happen on that lot?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now you're down to
Well, something can happen, but you're not going to finance it, still.
Unless you're self-financing.
Right.
Okay, so, now you're twenty-four, down to twenty months, okay, so with winter, realistically, is what, probably three months, you can't do dirt work between mud and frigging, ground freezing?
Four.
Okay.
I'd say four, December through March.
Okay. Now, fifteen-lot subdivision with, we'll say two roads in there. How long does it, how long is it going to take? Your definition of what is roads? One, one entry road and one feeder, one, one, just flyer off of it, yeah, it's something like that.
Whatever, yeah.
How long does it take to, to build to the fifth house, a third of the way in?
If a guy wanted to do it, he could get that road built in one summer, paved.
Okay.
Easy.
Is that, you say that, but is that feasible with today's market and everything else?
Well, if I don't know the plan, if I don't know the financial, depends who, who the owner is.
True.
Is it somebody's deep pockets, or is it me? If it's me, I can't afford to put a, put a piece of pavement off the road.
Yeah.
So that, that depends on the owner.
On average, how long would it take to get five houses built, from the time you leave?
Houses built?
Houses?
No, you're, you're actually, you're actually, you're actually, you're actually asking how long is it going to take to get five houses sold? Because that's what's really going to determine the whole thing.
Why?
Because he's not going to build a road, he's not going to sell a lot, sell a house. If you can't sell, if you can't sell the house, nobody's going to buy the lot.
It's a lot of time, when the bank gives you phasing financing, they have, they won't give you the financing for the second phase until you have X amount of houses sold in the first phase. They key their financing to house sales.
Where I'm going with this is, is twenty percent too low or too high, or is it just right? I'm, in my mind, my first thought when we started talking about this was twenty-five percent, quarter of the way.
Personally, I don't like the percentage, I like a phase idea. Because if somebody has an eight, eight-hundred-foot-long cul-de-sac, with ten houses on it, it's still a number up. Building whatever twenty, thousand-foot-long cul-de-sac, building two-hundred-feet-a-road shouldn't
Well, no, I, I don't want to base it just off of how much pavement's on the ground, I want to base it on other stuff too, because any, any Joe Blow can build a street out in the woods, and I'm not going, I wouldn't call that substantial completion. What are we trying to accomplish? I'm saying active and substantial. By active and substantial development. In other words, what is it that we're trying to do by saying, you have to do this much in the first two years? In my mind, I'd say that if you do X, Y, and Z within twenty-four months, you're committed to this project. So we want to get enough of an investment in the project that it will be completed. I think so, yeah. Me, for me, yes. That's the way I would do it.
Yes.
Is, is that the purpose?
I don't want to see a road half-built and a big, big mess, looks like, basically looks like a gravel pit for ever, because they got, because the guy
If the guy puts all of his roads in, all, he's certainly committed to the project. Moreover, it's saleable. Somebody else could buy it.
You have a first, two, and the first two-year timeframe, that's not reasonable.
It's not.
Why?
Depends how big the project is.
Exactly. I mean, if it's, if it's a substantial long road, that's reasonable. If it's a six-thousand-foot road, playing for three or four phases, that's
So then do we want to put in an under-feet-of-road as a condition?
I think it's also a harsh, I think it's a heavy burden on the developer, where we're forcing him to phase his building permits. We force him to phase his building permits, but we force him to build all the road at the same time.
That's a good point.
I mean
If you're only going to give him twelve
I went through a scenario last time where, I don't remember how big it was, but some of these phasings are out to seven or eight years.
Makes sense, don't build a road
For a phase, you're not going to build it for four years.
Yeah, I can't build a house out there for four years, but I got to build the road out there.
Yeah. Is that fair to the town, though, in effect, to allow the guy to be protected from any future changes for ten years, or whatever it is that you guys are talking about?
You're forcing him to put off building those houses for five or six years, then how is it not fair to allow them to do it?
Okay, so then what you're saying is, if we, if, if active and substantial development meant, in the case of a phased project, and they're a non-phased project, in the case of a phased project, the first phase had to be completed.
We've got, you know, not that this is irrelevant, because of course it is, but we've already, because of the five-acre lot restriction in the rural agricultural, ten-acre lot of their road, we're pretty restrictive already, so to think that we're going to harm a new subdivision that comes before us by looking toward future changes, chances are those changes might, not upending it, might even be elusive.
Well, we have to do is start putting a bigger wetland setback or wetland buffer in and
Really throw in a much more
Or wider road.
But the
Anything, anything above.
Having them have to bond the whole thing?
The, what is the whole thing, the phase?
Entire, the entire development. No, no houses, but the entire, all the improvements. If, after the, at the twenty-four-month period, if he hasn't started anything, he still has to have the bond in place.
The bond was on day one? Or the bond was when?
The bond starts at the twenty-four months.
Okay. And that's only if they don't meet criteria one, or is that automatic? But this, this does apply to phase one, doesn't it?
Yeah, the bonding does, but it doesn't, but that's, you got two years to do that. So that he, and the reason that is, is so somebody can go, if they got a small little road, they go in and build it, and not have to bond it, and they just bond the maintenance for the, at the finished base after, so they're not getting a bond for the whole thing. But if he's going to wait twenty-four months to start, they have to put a bond up. And just having them carry that bond is, is putting pressure on them to build it. How many insurance bonds have you seen out there? Most of its letters are credit that I think from a bank or a cashless pull-up, right?
Right.
So if we did phases, is there, is it usually a three-phase?
Well, it depends.
What's, is, so you could have two-phase?
Brookshire was two phases.
Okay.
The first phase is to the, to the bridge, second phase is the bridge and the rest of it.
Okay, alright.
Duck Pond, I think, is five phases.
Stone Hills over there was three.
And are they usually split up into equal segments?
Kind of, it all depends on the road geometry.
It depends on the road geometry, where a good place to stop it is, to build a hammerhead, that type of thing, building permits.
Okay, so a two-phase typically doesn't stop at halfway then? It could, it could stop at a quarter of the way, and then the last phase could be the last three-quarters?
Could be.
Okay.
At the same time, we, we can control the phasing too.
Okay.
If somebody puts the first phase at two hundred feet, they're going to build eight thousand feet of road, but they're trying to build two hundred feet of dusted.
Yeah.
A lot of times, phasing is, is a natural feature that creates a good vertical points, or a lot of it is related to sister-in requirements. You put a sister in, you know, you got two thousand feet to go to the end of the sister, and you get, before you spend all that seventy-five thousand dollars, you know.
Okay. Let, let me also point out to folks that this is a backup. If somebody
Yes.
If somebody comes in with a specific development
We can, we can make him do whatever he wants.
We can say, this is, this and this is necessary for you, and you only
Right.
in active and substantial development.
We're part development.
Yes.
Which is what we probably want to do, a little sizable.
Right.
Yes, right.
But the minimum, this is what we're being.
So, are we defining what the minimum is going to be?
Yes.
Is that what we're trying to do? Okay. All right, but we can go above and beyond that. Yes, but remember that
We can change.
We can change that at any time, but the minimum may become the standard.
Right.
As a practical matter. Yep.
We might just forget about the whole thing, if we're thinking about something else in the subdivision, and forget about the whole vesting problem.
Another, another way to look at this, let's assume that we had very stringent standards. The first thing that's going to happen is when somebody comes in for subdivision approval, they're going to say, we'd like you to impose specific, under section one, we'd like you to be, do something specific for ours, and we don't think that your general, we think your general standards are too high, don't make sense here. Okay. The reason for saying that, the reason for taking that approach is that puts, that puts the pressure on the applicant rather than the planning board, to go forward and bring the issue to our attention, and say, this doesn't make sense for me in my development. But, having it too stringent may also shy people away from even bothering to come to this town to even apply. No, because everybody knows, I mean, applying though, because like art, he knows he can get a waiver. May not be exactly the waiver he wants, but he knows he can get a waiver. And everybody knows that the planning board is going to look at the individual ones. So, I mean, that's, that's one way that forces us to look at each project and do what's right for that project. Okay. Rather than have a cookie cutter approach. Yep. But if you have too lenient a condition, it'll never come up again. And then we have to remember, oh yeah, if we don't do anything, this is what happens, so maybe we need to work on this. I think putting the burden on the applicant is, let's say, more effective than getting, instead of one-size-fits-all, getting the right conditions for each particular project. Because as, from the basis of, of our discussion now, I don't know how we could get something that we would want to think is universal. I don't think you could.
Can't. I mean, there's too many, too many permutations out there.
Right. And that was why I think we came in with a twenty percent.
I don't know, Bedford said twenty percent.
Oh. Some, some communities use a percentage? The twenty percent can be, can be changed.
Are you talking twenty percent, are they talking twenty percent of the infrastructure, the roads and support, or are they talking, are they including the actual housing units by that twenty percent?
That, on subdivisions, it's just the road infrastructure.
Yeah, it's just the road.
But on sight lands, it's the, the whole project buildup, right? Like a touristable building, it'd be twenty-seven mil.
Wait, on sight, this doesn't apply to
Yes.
It will. It won't in the subdivision regulations, but it does apply to sight lands as well.
How would that work?
Same way. Somebody's in with a twenty-four-unit apartment
That's where the percentage works out, but
If you have a twenty-four-unit apartment building, it's one thing, if you have a safely stored, it's being built in phases, it's a different thing. But it's still a site plan. Thinking statewide and other communities as well, we aren't going to have a twenty-four-unit apartment building, I don't believe, but.
Are you saying when we do site plan review, the same concept of vesting applies?
Yes.
Very much so. When I first started reading six seventy-four thirty-nine, the planning board may, as part of its subdivision and site plan regulation.
So do we need to have another one of these?
Yeah, let's get through subdivision first. We can worry, we, we can worry about site plans later. I mean, site plans could get
Site plans, I think, is where the percentage is more of a
Yes, I agree.
realistic approach.
But then again, I was, I was thinking about the smaller
If we wanted to go, we could just, if we're looking at a percentage, and we take into, I kind of what Neil was saying about making it more strict, or if we're looking visually, we could raise that percentage.
Right.
Yeah. Okay, let's assume, not for site plan, but for other
We're talking about subdivisions.
Subdivisions. We say, I'm, I'm being arbitrary, fifty percent or twenty-five percent. Of what?
Of the road.
Of the off-site, of, no building, on subdivision, you're not talking about houses here.
We're talking about a road.
We're talking about the road, any off-site
Grains, what's an off-site improvement?
If they have to do any work to the town road to get up the standard or something.
Now Bedford only said, Bedford, Bedford said at least twenty percent of the length of the approved on-site road system.
Twenty percent of the road system, that would be all roads.
On-site, on the, on-site road system, or, or six hundred feet, whichever is greater.
But the system includes the drainage and all that stuff too.
Yes. All the road control measures, yes.
How does that work out for them?
Well, it's also, the remainder of the road is bonded also, but
Do they, as a result of having that, do they find that they do an individual, under our, or an individual requirement for each one coming in? our, or an individual requirement for each one coming in, or do they let the general rule apply to them all, and rarely look at an individual situation?
The whole time I've been working in Bedford, the economy has been so good that people didn't even worry about losing their vesting in Bedford.
They got it done so quick, they never came close.
Except for the one that we're still dragging out right now. But we built twenty percent the first year. That wasn't a problem.
Everybody does.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're trying to sell, lots are going. Times are good, they were, you couldn't, couldn't give a lot in the market.
But when times were bad.
And you couldn't sell a lot if you had to. But, there's, to be blunt, there's hardly any place left in Bedford right now to build a road for subdivision.
Yeah.
It's built out for all practical purposes.
Really?
Really. Yeah.
There are no more housing?
There are lots available, but you can't, but not enough land to subdivide.
Well, the roads, no. Maybe two or three lots here, four, but no, a little short cul-de-sac, if that's it, there's nothing big. No twenty lot subdivisions, something like that, if you want.
These will all be hitting that direction? Which probably won't be long, because there's really a housing shortage, right, what I've read in the answer.
Down the way they're improving Gulfstone right now.
But we, the housing shortage is not, it's more of a house price issue, you know, housing shortage?
The rentals are being priced way over.
If, if there were houses, any house that's not put on the market, and where, for a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand less, none like that, anything much over that, you can't sell.
Why?
It's just not the buyers out there, look at, are looking for that, their first-time home buyer.
In where?
Look at houses generally right now.
We did a little subdivision in Bell and the guy, and built houses starting at three forty-nine.
In Bedford?
In Bell. They went pretty fast.
Three forty-nine?
He sold three forty-nine, well, starting at three forty-nine, so he sold for three seventy.
Yeah, Bell right on the highway, that's different from here.
Yes, oh yeah.
But don't we have a thousand lots or something like that, that are already approved? And all you have to do is sell them, and they're not selling.
That's because the price of lots, you can't build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house on what they have to get for the lots.
What, what are lots going for?
Well, people are asking seventy, eighty thousand.
You can't build a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house on a seventy, seventy-thousand-dollar lot.
Because it then becomes a three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, and that you can't sell.
Right.
So, the price of the house plus the lot has to be two fifty, and how much does that allow you to pay for the lot?
Forty, around there, forty thousand dollar lots, and there, there's so much water and lugs on them that you can't, the site work drives it up over, it costs a seventy-thousand-dollar lot.
Are the builders being too greedy in their profit margins?
No. Just the economics of it.
It's gonna change pretty soon.
How?
How will it change, why will it change?
It's gonna have to change, because there's no, the lot price, you're gonna have to, people are gonna drop their prices on lots, there's nobody's gonna get a place to live unless they pay more money for it.
There's not gonna be any two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses left.
What's lot sizing down in Bedford, just curious?
Lot size?
Yeah.
One and a half acres.
Okay.
What do, like, what do lots go for in Bedford?
Two hundred thousand.
And what kind of a house is put on that?
Six hundred thousand?
Six hundred fifty.
So, that's going for eight fifty, and that's on acre and a half, middle.
Cluster I did is acre lots, yes. They're selling fast, but they're selling.
Yep.
Oh yeah.
Oh yeah.
Completely different.
You know, to be, the size of the lot is more important than the size of the house.
I just did a variance.
But in Bedford, it's the address that counts.
Yes.
I just did, I just did a variance for a guy, and I saw the reason I did in ninety-six. I didn't do, I did the variance plan, he wants to put a two-stall garage, and he wants to get a variance, because he doesn't want to cut down this beautiful maple tree, it's fifteen inches in diameter, I'm like, "It's just a tree."
You don't know it in ten years.
And the planning board's gonna give you a variance for the, for the side setback because of this tree? He got it. But I mean, first thing he did, "Why do you have two wells?" He goes, "Well, we didn't have enough water in this well to, for the house and the irrigation system, I got a six zone irrigation system." I'm like, "Okay."
Enough said.
Save that tree. He drilled a well to save it, he's gonna water it, make sure it doesn't die.
So, what, what is the thought, do we want to go with, going back to the substantial, do we want to go with phasing for subdivisions?
I, I don't care if we go phasing, I changed my mind, I don't care if we go phasing or if we go percentage, as long as we go percentage with a minimum like Bedford did.
What is the min, oh, you mean a six hundred?
They said twenty percent or six hundred, whichever is greater.
Six hundred.
Linear feet of road.
Okay. So if I come in with a small subdivision, and my total road is six hundred feet, if I want vesting, I gotta put in the whole road.
So six hundred foot minimum?
Or, if it's more than six hundred feet.
You gotta do six hundred.
So you got six hundred feet of road, you got twelve hundred feet of front, you could get, might make it a little more, so you might get five lots on it.
Let's assume I have three thousand feet of road, no, four thousand feet of road.
Okay.
Under that, just explain how that would apply to four thousand feet of road.
Well, you'll have to do that.
Twenty percent of four thousand, that's eight hundred.
Thank you. Or six hundred, whichever is greater, so you gotta do eight hundred feet of road.
I see.
Well, you gotta bring the whole thing up to twenty percent.
Strictly the rule, bringing it up to-
What is, would you read theirs? Active and substantial.
When two, twenty percent of the length of the approved onsite road system or six hundred-
The width of the road, okay.
Two hundred feet, twenty percent of the length of the, of the approved onsite road system or six hundred linear feet, whichever is greater, as shown on the entire subdivision plan, or approved phase has been constructed to finish grade.
The entire subdivision plan, or-
Or approved phase.
So if it were-
That's back to that old-
If it were a five-phase subdivision-
Back to that comprehensive thing where you didn't really get approval for each phase.
So that covers both percentage and phase all in one then?
I don't think they're talking phase the same way you're talking phase.
We're talking, you're correct, when we speak of phase, we mean, how many houses, how many building permits can you get in a year?
When we're talking phase, it's already approved, finished, done, recorded.
We've approved, like Duck Pond, we approved the whole thing.
Right, that's not what they're talking about.
But he had a phase in the number of lots that he could do each year, building permits.
And the road, he phased the road off.
And he tied the road to the-
But the whole thing was approved.
Yes, they're not talking that way. They're back to the comprehensive thing, like I said, where we had ten years, we approved a phase or a year, for ten years, we kept going back.
Under, assuming this is the language we use, and Duck Pond comes in, what does he have to do to meet this test?
He has to build twenty percent of his road.
And we-
By the way, it continues, has been constructed to finish grade. All erosion controls have been installed, yabba dabba doo.
So he doesn't have to pave everything, but he has to have-
What, any pavement?
Finished subgrade to me is not, that's no gravel.
Oh, that says finished subgrade?
Finished subgrade.
Oh, okay.
Finished subgrade, do you mean spade?
No, finished subgrade is fill.
That's, that's generic fill.
Four and a half shorter of the pavement.
Yeah, if you have a gravel coming out of that-
That's the outline, basically, of the road.
Could you read that again?
Shall be deemed to have occurred when at least twenty percent of the length of the approved onsite road system or six hundred linear feet, whichever is greater, as shown on the entire subdivision plan, or approved phase has been constructed to finish subgrade. All erosion control measures have been installed, on any disturbed or cleared land areas on the subdivision plan, and financial guarantees remain on deposit with the town to ensure completion of remaining improvements.
Actually, it makes sense to have it to subgrade and not paved if you're the contractor, because if we hit a snag in the economy, like, your pavement like deteriorates before you ever got there.
Looks like it's gonna happen.
You know, you put all the money on the pavement, you go five, six years without being able to move the pavement.
Your grass won't up on pavement.
Before you even get any houses in.
So that's not that expensive, is that correct?
Oh, it's still pretty, you get more into the drainage system and culverts and all that stuff, and all your underground everything, that's gotta be put in.
At the same time, when you look at dairy, they require, well, not dairy, who's the dairy? They're back to the one, they, they stay the same as we did basically in our zoning, but they say through binder course, sufficient cause certificates of occupancy. Another one of them said something about all utilities, Francis Tans said all utilities, maybe somebody else, somebody said all utilities had to be ready at the lot buys. I, I think binder course should be down personally. I think subgrade is a pretty, well, it's not easy, I think it's-
Binder course, all from erosion too.
Yeah, once you get, once you get the pavement, the shoulder's not even done, you're-
What do you mean by binder course?
That's the first, first coat of pavement.
Top one, full finish one.
This is definitely where I'm reading, that's French stone, this is dairy.
And then that, that, so that first twenty percent in this example would be finished pavement, or just?
In my example, or in Bedford's example.
In Bedford's example, is that the wear code?
No.
It is not.
That's subgrade. Then you bring in twelve inches of gravel, and you bring in six more inches of gravel and pavement.
No, I'm talking that first six hundred feet.
Me too. If they say to subgrade.
Okay.
I think it'll be pavement, first course of pavement.
For the first half, or for the first, for substantial, I would agree.
I think it should be ready first, for difficulty of occupancy, plus it's stable for erosion, that kind of thing at that point, more stable.
But not the entire project being-
Whatever length we talk about, twenty percent, whatever, whatever the number is, fifty, twenty, whatever.
They have active and substantial development occurring within twelve months-
Yes.
-after the date of approval.
It used to be twelve months.
Uh, yeah, the date of approval is one inch, quarter inch, three inches.
Right.
Our date of approval is when I signed, is at the meeting.
So twenty-four months would be fair.
Well, the RSA, the RSA says, no, they don't define the substantial.
Yeah, they don't do anything here, they're, they're where we are.
Yes.
Was that dairy? Francis Tans.
Francis Tans. The RSA said twenty-four months, somewhere. I guess the RSA says twenty-four.
So I guess, what, what's fair from a builder's standpoint, and what's fair from a town's standpoint, and what, meet in the middle?
Well, it's, it's not quite, it's, it's not quite as easy as that if the purpose of what we're trying to do is to force the planning board to look at each individual situation and make a decision on the basis of the individual. If that's not our, then, then you're right, it's gotta be somewhere in the middle.
But, okay, so, using what you just said, if we are trying to force it back into the hands of the planning board, we still have to have guidelines to go by, which means we have to define ano, another, we have to define now those guidelines, what are we gonna go by?
No, we don't have to define it.
For, for how we, how do we-
The construction of such improvements or development as specifically required by the planning board is a condition of approval. So we- No limitations, no standards.
So we can say anything.
We could say anything we want.
I want power poles all the way to the end regardless.
I want the whole thing underground. When, I shouldn't say that. We, remember, we've approved the application-
Yep.
-so to speak, and now we're saying, what will give you vesting?
And at what point in the process do we do all this?
Before, this would be done before approval.
Before approval.
Right, so we, we got the whole thing, we're all agreed on all of the details, where the road is, where the land that's going to the town is-
Yep.
-if it's a cluster, and then the question is, well, in this particular development, what needs to be done for active and substantial development within the first two years?
Okay.
And let's assume we said fifty percent of the roads have to be completed, two and a half, okay? Two and a half times as much as Bedford does.
Yep.
Clearly, all of the developers would come in and say, "Look, in our case, there's a reason for not going to that standard." And we say yay or nay.
So basically, it's like, they have to come to us for a variance on everything.
With a waiver.
A waiver, excuse me.
Right.
I'm thinking from a zoning board standpoint, it's, they have to ask for a, a variance on everything that we put in there, basically.
Yeah, we'll be taking that out of zoning and then put it somewhere in your rights. Only it's not the place to have it.
No, but I'm, I'm thinking-
He's thinking, when every time a guy comes in for subdivision-
He, he's gonna have to have a waiver for every single thing, which means-
No, 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 only for this. And it's not a waiver, he just, well, he is.
It would have to be a waiver, yeah.
The fifty percent rule doesn't make sense for me, because I suggest paving this, this much of roadway, and we look at it and we say, "Yeah, that's reasonable." If, if you don't have that, then we're gonna, basically as we've done, we've never used that.
Yeah.
Ever.
They're all biting us.
Yeah, that's probably biting us.
Yeah.
Or bit us, whichever one.
Yeah. But do, I, my fear is we just, we don't go to the far extreme of, we, now we have to have, everybody has to come in, and everybody is going to be requesting a waiver on every little thing, I, I don't want to go to that extreme either.
Well, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be a waiver, it'd be a redefinition, because if, if you're-
I mean, I think we could go to thirty percent.
Whatever it is, and I used, I was arbitrary with it.
Yeah, no, and I get that, yeah.
But we leave this one right in here, so it's not a waiver.
Every one of these say, "In the absence of a specific finding by the planning board."
Okay.
Shall be deemed to be whatever.
And frankly, I think we were remiss in the past-
Yes.
-of ignorance or otherwise, in not looking at each one of these individually and saying, "Yeah, this is, for this particular subdivision, a reasonable amount of work to get done in the first two years is X, and then you get vest."
And we could actually require them to come in with a recommendation to us for phase in.
For what their definition of, what they would propose for active and substantial development.
And then we could work off that, so we wouldn't have to-
You mean, put it in the form?
Right, yeah.
There's an idea.
Kind of like that, let them define what they have to do first.
Put a note, have the note area on the plan started, saying this is, define as active and substantial.
And, and to the extent that we put something in here, let's say thirty percent or fifty percent, and a guy, a guy who didn't care for whatever reason, because like Bedford, they were gonna sell the thing immediately, he would say, "I like what you have, put that in for me."
Yep.
Including it would mean that we wouldn't miss it.
Yes, exactly.
So the thought, so Tom's thought is, have the applicant say, okay, have the applicant define what is substantial completion.
Right, and then if we don't-
Active and substantial.
We want a little more, uh-
Let them come to us.
And we could require that on any subdivision plans that require a new rule or something.
Or any subdivision. Well, oh, look, look at what we just did, the four lot.
He doesn't have anything to complete.
There's nothing for him to do, so this makes no sense.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, we, we require, under the application that require the road construction.
So, let me ask, let's ask right now about that, we didn't do anything on his, that, boy, we screwed up, okay? If we gave him approval for that subdivision, I take it he's grandfathered forever?
Yeah. Yep, he's good.
Okay, let's assume that we wanted to make sure that he wasn't grandfathered forever, Okay, let's assume that we wanted to make sure that he wasn't grandfathered forever. Don't ask him why.
Okay.
Does any of this apply?
No, because there's no...
No, no, what, he didn't have any improvements to do. If he had a cistern or something like that.
He's not doing anything other than putting down some monuments.
Yeah, I mean, in a sense...
But he, he's gonna get approval until he does that.
Much more than boundary or a chessboard.
So, so what this really is aimed at is those kinds of subdivisions where, in order to make them viable, the developer has to do something beyond surveying. This is, because the only thing this guy, the only, the only thing these guys did is survey.
Yeah, that's all.
Oh yeah, that's why I was trying to just...
Poison ivy, mosquito, black fly.
All I did was survey it.
He's worried that I'm denigrating the profession.
No, you are. You're not worried, you are.
Compared in cost to putting in a road, surveying is not that expensive.
We are cheaper than roadway, so.
So this is only defining subdivisions that actually have a road going?
Or, or have to do something else.
What would that be then, something else?
Sister, would that be included in that?
If, if somebody were to take a, if there was a dirt road in town, somebody had a bunch of frontage on, and they wanted, have the lot small and 10 acres? If they wanted to, okay, we're gonna pave that road, we're gonna put two cisterns in to get all our lots in? If they had, if there was a phasing aspect to that?
Or there was a substantial amount of offsite improvements that were necessary?
That could be phased over time as they work on the road.
Or they put a subdivision in and the roads are gonna come out on such and such a road, and that intersection with such and such a road in 77 is horrible.
Okay.
Or 114. They have to even walk in the intersection.
That's the offsite improvement.
That's the offsite improvement they'd have to do.
Okay.
Although Bedford, Bedford says nothing about offsite improvement, it only says something about onsite improvements.
Yeah, which, I think is a little strange.
I do too. But anyway.
When Bedford uses the 20% or 50%, that's not of dollars, that's of feet of road, right? Does anybody use percentage of dollars that, that you have to do for...
Dollars are changed because of inflation?
Yeah, you would, you'd still have to have, if you were gonna call it a 20%, I think it's still, if Bedford took away the, the, having to do that by defining the 20% of all your feet of road. But if there was, I, I don't know.
I think it'd be more difficult to prove one way or the other. I mean...
Where the 20% is.
The 20%, we have this little bond calculation sheet someplace in here that is grossly outdated, and we are gonna, we'll talk about that someday soon too, but... There it is. A formula of how, how much it costs to build a road. By the town of where.
In 1984.
This is what they bond the road by.
Today?
To get a driveway out of it.
It costs you $4.25 to clear and grub one foot of roadway, 50 feet wide. Catch basin costs $1,200.
Actually, Jim Donison probably could do it there.